Okay. Great to see so many people here. I know we have a special presentation this evening. Very special young lady, but before we get started, I want to get this meeting called to order. Vice Mayor, members of the council, staff, members of public, thank you so much for being here. It's always a pleasure to see you. And Russell, if you're ready, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Jablonski?
Here.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Here.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Here.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Here.
Mayor Nelson?
Here. We please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, again, it's great to see everybody. We have a very special presentation of somebody that just retired, that we just loved and adored, and has been a part of this community for a long, long time. And I think what I'll do, Juanita, is I'll call you up, because I know you have a lot of the family members that are here as well. So if you don't mind introducing them, we'd appreciate that very much. And we have a special plaque and a recognition, and I'm sure that quite a few of us have some things to say. But Juanita, after, how many years had you worked here? Come on up, Juanita. I want to spend some time with you because I just adore you.
Just about nine years.
About nine years. And how many years were you resident in the town of Southwest Ranches? My goodness.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven.
Thirty-six, thirty-seven. And a lot of interesting, unique, and fond memories. I know, and I know going back with Dad, I was sitting there talking to you and your son, and he remembered the rides on the fire truck when I used to go wash him. In fact, when I saw your son, I mistakenly identified him as your brother. But I apologize for that. But you look so young, Juanita. Maybe, you know, this retirement is...
It agrees with me.
Absolutely. Definitely agrees with you. And then talking to you about what's going on in your life, and what you're doing now, and having a good time. And it's nice to be in a position where you can dictate life's processes. And that's very unique and very, very cool, that's for sure. And knowing you, I know that you'll have to come up with something, talking about some of the interesting things that were on your plate, that you were contemplating to keep you going, and very, very, very cool. Keep you young, you know, which is a really good thing. Always have something to look forward to. But we love you and we adore you, Juanita, and hate to see you go. We don't ever want to say goodbye. We just want to say, you know, until we see you again. So before I do the presentation, if you don't mind, could we, would you mind introducing us to your wonderful family?
Come on, family.
Absolutely, because we want to get a picture, too.
I guess I should start from the oldest. Frank Romance. We've been together for how many years now?
Many.
A lot. And then my brother Frank. He lives in Ocala, but he spends half of his time with me.
Great.
And my brother Charlie. He's the baby of the family.
Charlie, pleasure.
And my son Mark. He lives in the Coral Gables. My son Mike, he lives here in Davie. And back there, Anne Marie thinks she's not family, but she is.
Hi, Anne Marie. Come up here, Anne Marie, because we want you to be a part of this picture and this presentation.
And I also have my sister who is not here. She tried to get here, but she couldn't quite make it. She lives in Atlanta. But she comes down frequently.
Maybe we can figure out a way to, the video part of it, to save this particular portion, make sure she gets a copy of it.
Okay, thank you.
Very special moment. If I could, and welcome. Great to have you all. You have just a beautiful, wonderful family, Juanita. And as we were talking about early, so many fond memories. You know, not only as an employee here, because employee is one thing, but the family part of it, the family component is probably the most unique and special. And Juanita was a very, very important part of this family. And while we hate to see her go, we know that she's on to bigger and better things. And what better way than to go out, you know, and to retire, and to enjoy life, and put yourself in a position to do these things. But we're just so happy for you, Juanita, and we appreciate all that you've done for the town of Southwest Ranches, both as an employee, your dear friend. I love you. I adore you. Thirty-six years is a long time. So many fond memories. Not thirty-six years for me, but about for you, about 20 years for me. But I remember 20 years ago. And you've been a very, very important part of this family. And we hope that you'll stay in touch and keep us updated on all these wonderful things that I know that you're going to explore, and you're going to experience, and you're going to enjoy as part of the retirement process. So with that, we have a plaque. And if you don't mind, if we can just kind of hang out for a minute, we would all like to come down and preserve this moment with a photograph. The plaque says, "Presented with sincere appreciation to Juanita Romance, your service, dedication, commitment, and many contributions will be everlasting. We will never forget. From 2007 to 2016. 180, we love you. We adore you, and wish you nothing but the very, very best."
Thank you. Thank you.
Slide this out of the way. It's a nicer picture without it.
Much nicer.
Okay, item number four. I know Marty's very excited about this. We've read him, taken a look at it, and our CAFER. And Bela is here for the presentation. So if we can get you, I guess you're going to get the process started, Marty. Hey, don't forget, now I've got the off button, so be very careful. All right? And I got the Mean Gene Dancing Machine just inside that door. He's got that long, you know, if he needs to. Just kidding with you, Marty. We love you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I only have one PowerPoint, so that's good to know. Well, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and councilmembers. For the record, my name is Martin Sherwood, your Town Financial Administrator. Tonight, before I formally introduce Bela Sherman, CPA and Director, who is here from the independent auditing firm of Markham LLP, I am pleased to provide you all and the residents the town's comprehensive annual financial report, otherwise known as the CAFER, for the fiscal year ended 2015. I have some samples up by the Town Clerk. I have some samples in the back, and I have some extra on the desk if anyone wants to look at it. The CAFER, by the way, has been in the agenda and up on the website. So for you on TV tonight, you'll be able to follow it on Comcast. The town's fiscal year 2015 CAFER is the ninth consecutive CAFER prepared since 2007, and the 10th overall since the town's inception. Specifically, a few key favorable financial highlights that I would wish to report are, number one, the independent auditor's report, which Bela will elaborate more on later during her presentation, but it reflects an unmodified, also known as a clean audit opinion. And this is the highest assurance given that the town's financial statements were prepared in conformity with generally accepted accounting principles. A clean audit opinion gives comfort to the Town Council and the citizens of the community that the town's finances are being maintained and accounted for properly. Second, the town's government-wide assets exceed its liabilities by $52,289,857. That's on the CAFER reference, is page seven, with the detail on page 15. And this analysis is comparable to a balance sheet in the private sector. And we are in a surplus net government-wide position overall. Second, I do have that one PowerPoint. Town Clerk, please put that up. We're very proud. And during 2015, I would like to congratulate and acknowledge all Town staff. Now, this is a first tonight, Mayor. I'm going to ask everyone who's here of Town staff to please rise. Come on, we're going to rise and acknowledge Town staff for your help and effort. We finished the year in a conservative and fiscally responsible manner that created a net positive increase in fund balance in both the total of all the town's governmental funds in the amount of $1,008,859, as well as a positive increase within our solid waste enterprise fund in the amount of $396,111. Now, this is the fifth consecutive year of positive increases in both fund types, which you will see on the graph, obviously. There's five years to the left showing a decline, five years to the right with increases. So we're very proud. Thank you all, staff as well. Fourth is our unassigned fund balance, which is otherwise known as our reserves. That's antiquated, but we refer to it as reserves as well. For the general fund, increased $534,000 to $4,365,118, and which represents 45% of total general fund expenditures and transfers. Therefore, the town continues to far exceed the minimum unassigned fund balance standard as recommended by the Government Finance Officers Association, which only recommends 16.7%. And then finally, number five, we are proud to report for the third straight consecutive year, fiscal year, that the independent auditor's report on internal controls, that's towards the back of the CAFER, '85, '86, and the management letter in accordance with the rules of the Auditor General of the state of Florida, that's '87 and '88, identify no material weaknesses or deficiencies in internal control. That's it for my presentation. Now let me introduce and welcome your next presenter from Markham LLP. Bela Sherman has more than 20 years of experience providing accounting, auditing, and advisory services for a wide range of entities, including municipal governments. As the CPA and Director in Markham LLP's Assurance Division, her primary responsibilities include onsite supervision and review of audit engagements to ensure they are prepared in accordance with professional and firm standards. Ms. Sherman provides guidance to clients ranging from complex accounting issues to general business and accounting developments. She also has a significant experience in the evaluation of internal controls. Bela, come on up, please.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. My name is Bela Sherman, and as Marty said, I'm with Markham LLP out of the Fort Lauderdale office. And I'm the one who's responsible for the audit engagement for the town. And so Marty mentioned a number of the highlights. One of the things I wanted to do was thank both Marty and Andy for all of their assistance in making sure that the engagement went well. We had no issues, no problems with staff. Everything was given to us timely. The doors were open to us, which made the engagement go very well. So thank you. Thank you. One of the things that is prepared in the CAFER, and you'd notice, we've mentioned it every year, is the MDNA, which is really Management's Discussion and Analysis. And on page four of that, and nobody really has to go there, but there's the highlights there, and it really talks about how well you're doing and how things have been improving. One of the things within the MDNA as well is on, it's actually, on page six, there's actually a comparison. And if some people wanted to see what was happening last year versus this year, they could actually see that for net position. One of the things that I thought that people looking at the CAFER would also be interested in, and it's in the MDNA, is actually on page nine, because people are wondering, like, what do you do with the money that you collect? And it actually takes the expenses and allocates them and shows where the money of the town is actually going. So I just wanted to sort of highlight that. So when Marty was talking about fund position, that's, you know, assets minus this new thing called deferred outflows and deferred inflows, minus liabilities, and that's where you come to this net position. But that's residual, and a lot of it is non-spendable because of the infrastructure that you have, all the roads to the buildings and things like that. So it's really on the statement of net position that you actually see what your cash is, what your liabilities are, and things of that nature. One of the things that we're actually required to do, and it was part of the actual package, is we communicate to those charged with governance. So that's why I'm here. And we just wanted to say that the accounting policies that the town is using are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. There were no new policies required this year. Next year, there's GASB 72, which is on investments, so things will look different. But you did not have to deal with the GASB 68 and all the pension liability issues that many municipalities are having to deal with this year. As I mentioned, we had no difficulties with the audit this year. It was a pleasure for us. There were no disagreements with management. There were no unadjusted errors. We didn't have any audit issues, any other findings, or any other matters. So does anyone have any specific questions on the CAFER that I might be able to answer while I'm here?
A lack of questions, I think, is a confirmation that we're pretty darn happy with regards to the state of affairs financially that exists in the town of Southwest Ranches. And I think we're, everybody is thrilled. And it's, you know, it's a confirmation of people that work hard up here to ensure that the town is doing the right things, that do their homework, and know intimately and in detail, you know, whether it's from the financial perspective, policies, or whatever. They just do an outstanding job. And I appreciate Marty taking the time to have the staff stand up and be recognized. But for the fifth consecutive year, to have a positive cash flow, this year, fund balance, an increase of over, just talking about some of the highlights, of over a million dollars. And one of the most important things to me is always go flip to the back, you know, and take a look. And we all know why, material weaknesses.
Yeah.
And not one. Not one. Wasn't that long ago, years back, where we had a lot. And they were significant and very concerning. And there was many of us that, not only sitting up here today, but also in the audience, remember those days.
Yes.
So to go to the back and see no material weaknesses, and no issues or no problems is a significant accomplishment, a significant achievement. And I got to tell you, I'm very, very proud of what this says and what we've done. And got some challenges, obviously, in the future. We all recognize that. I don't think there's any question about that. But moving forward, just very confident and, you know, very happy and appreciative of what exists here, and what's going on, and the direction this town is going. And just a special place that accomplishes special things, and just very, very happy. And here's a confirmation of that, obviously. Most important indicator, obviously, from a municipality's perspective, is the financial condition and status. And very, very happy, as you all should be. And congratulations on an outstanding fiscal year. Congratulations.
We have, that we're required to report to the state, there's not just material weaknesses and significant deficiencies that are in what we call the yellow book letter. But if there are other comments that we felt needed, maybe didn't rise to that level, that we would have to report those. But we did not even have those. So that is something, you would have seen it in your communication to those charged with governance, but not written up as material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. So we really did not have findings that we thought didn't meet the level, but did not need to, did not, that could be reported type thing, so.
We keep saying this to Marty all the time, you know, and how do you top that? How do you top that? But doggone it, you just keep topping it, you know? I don't know what your ceiling is. Just keeps improving and getting better, Marty. So I don't know what your ceiling is. Just you keep raising the bar. And, you know, just so appreciative and so happy that you're part of this team. And here is our Finance Director, because we just continue to marvel at the things that you produce, and all the wonderful things that you do on behalf of the town, especially as, you know, relates to our finances. There isn't anybody any better, in all of our opinions, that's for sure.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council. Now, it is recommended that the Town Council introduce, then accept via motion, the comprehensive annual financial report as audited by our independent external auditors, Markham LLP CPAs, for the fiscal year ended September 30th, 2015, including the communications to those charged with governance letter dated March 14th, 2016.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the CAFER.
I wasn't going to try to repeat that either.
Whatever, Steve. No, I'm just kidding. Russ, we call the question, please?
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fitz Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. And again, Vice Mayor and council and staff, congratulations on a wonderful fiscal year. So happy and so proud. Well done. Okay, that concludes our item number five, our CAFER presentation. Bela, thank you so very, very much. Always a pleasure to see you. And we always welcome the good news. We hope that it, and anticipate that it's going to continue. Item number five, public comment.
Mayor, by the way, although the CAFER normally just gets entered into the record, if anyone wishes to speak on that item, they can do so during the public comment.
Okay.
Because it's really simply an entry. We have four public comments tonight. One of them, Jill Aronofsky, speaking on an item on the agenda, so that won't be called as a result of that item's called. So in this order, it's Noel Hugginsworth, Bob Hartman, and Astronite. Oh, we have some more. Is there anyone else?
Yep. Noel Hugginsworth, 199th Avenue. Thank you, Mayor, for letting me speak during CAFER. I will speak now on the CAFER. I only got the page six, the IV, on there, which if you'll take a look, it's that one right there. If you'll pull it up, and we'll talk about the defects.
Is it on the agenda?
The organizational flow chart is incorrect. And there's a couple of major errors there. One, take a look on the left, Town Clerk, Assistant Town Administrator. That should have two colors. One half should be colored, the other half should be clear. There should be a line between them, but combined because it's the same individual. There should be a solid line from the Town Council to the Town Clerk, a dotted line, and a solid line from the Town Administrator to the Assistant Town Administrator, and a dotted line to the Town Clerk. That's one. The second major discrepancy is fire rescue administration, saying that person is hired by the Town Administrator. That person is not hired by the Town Administrator. That person is hired by the Town Council, which serves as the Board of Directors of the Volunteer Fire Department. Now, and so therefore, there should be another solid line going out to the right of either Financial Administrator or Town Clerk to the left, from the Town Council, with a dotted line from the Town Administrator to that position. Fire rescue should be under that, and Volunteer Fire Department should be underneath that, with two separate solid lines. Also, the Board of Directors of the Volunteer Fire Department is not listed as one of the divisions. And that is appointed by the Town Council, and they have appointed themselves, which are you guys. So that is incorrect. And I was pointed out that this goes up through September 30th, because on October 1st, we have a new position under Parks and Recreation, which on the next flow chart should be there. But I think those two major things, they need to be put in and corrected in the CAFER before distribution. Thank you. And now, let's see, I got 30 seconds left. I would like for the Town Council, all of you, to go out to 172nd and Griffin Road, and look at the east side of the road. There is a section of property there that is under maintenance by Prestige. I mentioned it at the last meeting. It is totally neglected by Prestige, and I will be pointing up one at a time on this because they are doing a lousy job to the west, a great job to the east, and we demand, and we should demand, the same level of competence on both east and west sides of I-75. Take a look at it. It's overgrown. There's exotics in there, and all sorts of other good stuff and brush on the ground. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Bob Hartman, followed by Astronite, followed by Kathy Cox.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace. I wanted to speak for a couple of minutes about the issue going on with the entrance to the trail out where the guardrails are going up. You know, we couldn't have had those guardrails too soon. Unfortunately, we got them after some significant events.
person is hired by the Town Council, which serves as the Board of Directors of the Volunteer Fire Department. Now, and so therefore, there should be another solid line going out to the right of either Financial Administrator or Town Clerk, to the right, to the left, from the Town Council, with a dotted line from the Town Administrator to that position. Fire Rescue should be under that, and Volunteer Fire Department should be underneath that, with two separate solid lines. Also, the Board of Directors of the Volunteer Fire Department is not listed as one of the divisions, and that is appointed by the Town Council, and they have appointed themselves, which are you guys. So that is incorrect. And I was pointed out that this goes up through September 30th because on October 1st, we have a new position under Parks and Recreation, which on the next flow chart should be there. But I think those two major things, they need to be put in and corrected in the CAFRA before distribution. Thank you. And now, let's see, I got 30 seconds left. I would like for the Town Council, all of you, to go out to 172nd and Griffin Road and look at the east side of the road. There is a section of property there that is under maintenance by Prestige, I mentioned it at the last meeting. It is totally neglected by Prestige, and I will be pointing up one at a time on this because they're doing a lousy job to the west, a great job to the east, and we demand, and we should demand, the same level of competence on both east and west sides of I-75. Take a look at it, it's overgrown, there's exotics in there, and all sorts of other good stuff in brush on the ground. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Bob Hartman, followed by Astronite, followed by Kathy Cox.
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198th Terrace. I wanted to speak for a couple of minutes about the issue going on with the entrance to the trail out where the guardrails are going up. You know, we couldn't have had those guardrails too soon. Unfortunately, we got them after some significant events. Would've been great if they were there five years ago. When we were offered the guardrails by the county after requesting, I think everybody was really excited. And I know that plans had to be reviewed, and somewhere there was a slip-up because we had talked at the Drainage Committee meetings about entrance points. I suggested, I believe, 12 because that would be at the end of each one of the streets, giving, this thing sounds terrible. Or is it my voice? You know, I guess what it turned out is, is only four are being planned. Well, I believe it's gonna be addressed tonight by the Town Administrator, because I believe he's been working with the county. But, you know, I always do lessons learned. I'm a project manager professionally, and I'm always looking at how, on the next time, we can improve. And there's something we do at work, and we did when I worked for FDOT, and I know that a number of you experienced it with the I-75 improvements that were planned. They plan stakeholder meetings. They look at who's impacted by the project, they look at who should have some say, provide feedback, provide input. And I know we've done that from time to time in town, but to me, it should probably become a regular practice. If we had a stakeholders' meeting for that project, although we wanted to get started on it because it can save lives, by missing that step, we left out the trail riders, who are heavy users of the trail. There's a number of businesses on Griffin Road that operate horseback riding businesses. There's a million families, I mean, there's eight families, I believe, on my street that have horses. And I'm only one street of the 12 or 13 up and down Griffin Road. So, you know, to avoid this next time and not have to bring people out en masse as to support what we ought to be thinking about in advance, I'd recommend that we start having these types of meetings anytime there's something that's gonna impact the community significantly. And to me, those guardrails impact us very positively. And frankly, from a horseback riding standpoint, it's a good thing, too, because when you're on the other side of the rail, you're not gonna have somebody sideswipe or pull off the road, or, you know, it becomes safer for horseback riders. But I know a lot of people expressed a lot of concern this week about it because I think we made a mistake, and I'll take responsibility. As Chair of the Drainage Committee, I could've said, have we reached out to everybody? We should have, and I didn't as well. But in any case, I'd recommend that going forward, and I understand there are some things being worked on to improve the access situation, so I look forward to the comments. Thank you.
Astronite, followed by Kathy Cox, followed by Brian Skelly.
Astronite, 5480 Southwest 178th Avenue, Southwest Ranches. I'm here to speak about a lighting ordinance. Our town has a dark sky ordinance, which allows us to enjoy the brilliance of the night sky. It is what sets us apart from the surrounding municipalities. There seems to be an assault on this aspect of our semi-rural lifestyle. It appears that not only new constructions, but older residences are being lit up in such a way that we will soon be indistinguishable from our surrounding city and town. I know we are supposed to be reactive in addressing code issues, except for a few exceptions, but this disregard for this ordinance needs some attention. It seems quite widespread. I haven't got the time to go all over this town to report individual cases, but I think that if code services could start with Martha Boulevard and do the rest of the town section by section, the problem would be resolved. I also believe that all applicants for all building permits should be reminded of this ordinance. This would prevent anyone from pleading ignorance of its existence. There is a home on 178th and Grabing that has muted lighting, which looks beautiful. That is following the code. Thank you.
Kathy Cox. Brian Skelly, followed by Lee Wessel.
Kathy Cox, I live at 4940 Thornburg Lane, and I am a member of the Trail Riders. I'm here tonight because I was flabbergasted to learn that after the town had spent many thousands of dollars improving the trail on Griffin Road, that they had allowed the county to come in and, or asked the county to come in and build a guardrail along Griffin that had no openings between Bonaventure Boulevard and 202nd Avenue. And quite frankly, I couldn't believe it. You're fencing out the entire equestrian community on the west side of Bonaventure Boulevard from access to the trail. There's no way to get there. Even the opening at 200, at the structure of 202nd, the guardrail appears to come right up to the concrete flume, and I don't know that you could get a horse over the concrete structure that's there. But in any case, we really need to ask the county to provide more openings on that area and along the trail. We need one at 198th to accommodate the hack line that runs out of there, we need one at 196th Lane, we need one at 193rd Lane, we need one at Fishing Hole Park, which is the town park, and we need one at 188th. The problem being is that, you know, you can't always pass in the neighborhood to the south of Griffin, you can't pass back and forth. And if you do go out on Griffin, you wind up riding on the sidewalk to the south side of Griffin Road, which is absolutely hazardous in a lot of cases. So I would respectfully request that you all ask the county to accommodate us more. I would like to see one at every street, but I think, you know, we could probably get by with not every street if that's where we have to go. But I am just absolutely astounded that we are in this position. It's really terrible to fence out the entire western part of Southwest Ranches and the country estates neighborhoods. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Brian Skelly, Lee Wessel, and then the final speaker is Debbie.
My name is Brian Skelly. I live at 4475 Southwest 105th Avenue in Davie. I'm currently standing as President of the South Florida Trail Riders Association of Broward County, and our concern is, tonight is the review of the guardrail that's proposed. I believe it's an approximately two-mile-long guardrail from Bonaventure Boulevard out past 200th Avenue. I've heard a lot of input from people who live out here, a lot of our club members of residences out here in Southwest Ranches, as well as your neighboring town Davie ride out here as well. It's a nice trail, I just think there was something that was grossly overlooked, which was the openings. I'll have to agree with this gentleman saying there should, I think the best idea would be an opening at every street. I think the safety issues of trying to work your way to an opening where they're proposed now is gonna be hazardous to any of the horses going through there. I'm also concerned about maybe the width of the openings also. The rail's gonna be very close to the road, and I think these riders who use the trail that I see quite frequently riding out there are all gonna be jeopardized with their safety. Recently, I appreciate the fact you let us do a wash rack out of Fishing Hole Park, that's a very nice equestrian park out there as well. But we noticed that even at that location of that equestrian park there, there is no opening proposed right there. So I think there was a lot of things overlooked on this guardrail. We did complete, recently, our club completed with cooperation from the town of Southwest Ranches, the wash rack there, and hopefully it'll get plenty of use. One other item I'd like to mention there is, at that park, while I'm on the topic of that park, is, I believe there's a baseball field or something proposed there. I think it would be nice if there was actually a riding arena proposed there. There's plenty of baseball parks, I believe, in the area. There's quite a few of them on the north side of Griffin Road there. But the, I know, going back to, I know the council members, the mayor, vice mayor, all elected officials here to represent the residences out here. A majority of the residents out here, I believe, all own horses. It seems to be one of the last standing communities, you know, that allow the small farm ranches out here. And I just think that something was overlooked, that I believe some representatives either, I wasn't called upon for any input, and I certainly would've passed it on to club members if there's a planning meeting going on, saying a guardrail going up, or some type of fencing, or something that's gonna affect the trail. It would've been nice if I could've told back to people who called me regarding this rail that's going up and said, yes, Southwest Ranches, you know, did notify us prior to a planning meeting about this rail and that we were involved in it. I'd like to see a little more participation, you know, from the council with the concerns of those using the multi-use trail there. And I guess that's basically it. I'd like to see some changes done to that proposed guardrail coming up there, mainly for the concern of the riders or the trail riders. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie. Certainly, then, Debbie.
Hello.
Steve, pull it down.
I am Lee Wessel. I live on 4830 Southwest 196th Lane. I moved here 37 years ago with a guinea pig, five horses, three dogs, and 16 cats by myself from Chicago. And I moved here because it was unincorporated Fort Lauderdale and a lot of horses. I have been using the trail, going across 196 Griffin Road to that trail for all these years, and I was appalled when I found out that my trail's gonna be taken away. I would like an entrance at 196. Even if you don't have entrances, if they're even two streets away, I have to go past the nursery, go out to the Griffin Road on my horse, and it's gonna be as dangerous as can be to try to take a horse to go to another entrance. I think the guardrail was a great idea because it would. It would guard the horses against from traffic, but we need a lot more openings. That's all I ask, so that I can safely go and ride this trail. And other than that, if they could do that, I don't know how many entrances, I know they probably won't go to every street, but I would like one at 196th Lane because my husband and I use that all the time, and there's several horses up there that do use it. So for us, that would be really wonderful. So thank you very much.
Debbie Green, 5201 Southwest 199th. First of all, I just wanna say, I totally am in agreement with the, having more breaks in the guardrail. I think it was an oversight, the guardrails are definitely needed out there, but I think it's important to look at having more openings for the equestrian community and all the trails. And second is, I'm just gonna speak to you once again, hopefully you'll reconsider the speed bumps, humps on 199th Avenue. Just reminding you again, when you closed the roads, we didn't take a survey of the residents. When you put speed humps, we didn't take a survey of the residents. So I don't know, I mean, you felt the importance to do it this time. Just, and at the last town meeting, we talked about, we wanted to possibly spend time and effort into renaming our roads to make, from numbers to names that are more rural. It is not rural to have four speed humps now, since a couple of them were taken away in about three-tenths of a mile. It's just not rural. And just some history, back in the late, when was Hurricane Andrew?
Ninety-two.
Ninety-two. And then even into the, so the late 80s, early 90s, everybody on our street was perfectly happy, thrilled with the traffic on our roads. Everything south of the gate was woods. The same on, you know, from to the other side of the canal. So where we stand today, so yes, traffic was horrendous. It got to be horrendous later, when the roads were put through and the communities were built out. But today, where we stand today, not what was, but what is reality today, we have actually less traffic than we had back then, because right now where the gates are, that do not open, everything south of them was woods. So we have the same traffic, there's no new houses, everything that's there, it was there before. The only difference is we have less ATVs and golf carts because they can, the ones that used to go through the woods, can no longer do that. So I'm just asking you all to reconsider, even in your survey that you sent out, the verbiage in there basically was saying, the reason those gates that the speed humps were put up no longer exist, which is exactly the case. The reason that they were put up no longer exists. Those might as well be woods out there where the gates are. So I'm just asking respectfully that maybe that you readdress, you have time before the roads are done, to readdress 199th and actually the need for them. If it's just a matter of, maybe we have some neighbors who are disrespectful, the town and residents should not be paying for putting back speed humps or whatever's done when the road is done, to ask your neighbor to please be respectful. So thank you.
Thank you. That's in there.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Item number six, board reports. Any board members, committee members have any news? Seen none. Item six is concluded. Item number seven, council member comments. Steve?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to, does this sound, doesn't sound, no? Okay. I'm gonna leave most of the response for the guardrail and the openings to Andy, because I know he has some prepared comments. I will say that I hear what you all are saying, and I acknowledge the fact that really, we did miss a step there. There was actually, to be honest with you, there was some feedback that should be more openings, but somehow it didn't translate out. So that's already, you know, water under the bridge, won't worry about that, we'll try and do better next time. I will say that, you know, I was looking at adding a couple. I've heard what people have said tonight, and I think clearly we need more than a couple. So Andy's gonna talk about that, and we'll work towards getting a lot more openings out there. We have to work with the county on that because they're really footing the bill on this, so. But so far, they've been very receptive, they've been a great partner, and so we'll work to resolve that issue. I wanted to touch on a couple of other items as well. One of them is, I have the privilege, which, by the way, everybody in town has, can have the same privilege, but I have the privilege of taking a class on Tuesday nights, the CERT class, which is with the fire department and basically, I'm trying to remember the exact acronym for CERT, that's probably on the test that I'm gonna have to take at the end of this class, and I'm already behind, so.
Community Emergency Response Team.
What is it?
Community Emergency Response Team.
Community Emergency Response Team. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. Glad you're in the front row. So, but it's a great class on learning, in an emergency situation, being prepared to be able to handle the situations. We have the, one of the two instructors for the class is in the very back there, Assistant Chief Downey, and she does a great job in that class. And I wanted to mention that because, for two reasons. First of all, I really wanna encourage other residents to get involved in this class, not only to learn for yourself, but, you know, it's been 11 years since we had a hurricane here. You know, that string is about to run out, I hate to tell you, but it, you know, it's not gonna go much longer. So, and in that type of a situation, it's really critical that we have residents that can jump in, are prepared, are trained, have the equipment, they even provide equipment to you to do the job right, and really can assist in an organized way, the fire and rescue teams, that frankly, in a situation like that are overwhelmed and, you know, they're looking for assistance. So I would really encourage folks to take this class and get involved. The other thing that I wanted to mention was something that Chief Downey brought up in just this last class, and it's a program called Safe by Four. And it deals with two leading issues for child fatality, to be honest with you, a little bit blunt, but the two leading ways that children under four lose their lives. And one is through sleeping in the wrong way, in the wrong positions, and not, and parents, you know, parents, a lot of times, think they're doing things exactly the right way, the way, the safest way, because certainly, every parent wants to take care of their kids as safe as they possibly can, but it's just a matter of not being trained in what truly is the safest way. And as this has gone in, we've really seen, they've seen some great results in child fatalities dropping based on sleeping issues. So that's one thing, and then the other is drowning, which I think we're all aware of as well, is a major issue. So I bring that up because what we're gonna be doing is kind of getting a little bit more involved in that, gonna be distributing some material on that, and providing opportunities for the community to be trained, to have our administrative staff be trained, and really get more involved in that, because it's really critical. And, you know, those are, those are all preventable deaths. That's the biggest thing about it. Every one of those deaths can be prevented with just education and people, you know, knowing what the right thing is to do, and then following up on that. So I wanted to mention that. The last thing that I wanted to mention on, we've had a number of comments over the last several months about the paving, the Tisdor paving. over the last several months about the paving, the Tisdor paving that's going on out on, out west, 205, 208, 210, 209, and 50th. And so, this past weekend, I actually went out there, and I walked, I walked the entire edges of 208 and 210 and 50th, because that's where most of the complaints were coming from. And I literally watched, walked the entire edge one way, and then the entire edge back the other way, all the way around, because I wanted to see exactly what was going on. I think, well, I'll tell you, overall, from what I saw, I was very, very pleased with what I saw. I think that a lot of the feedback that we received was based on seeing the paving before it was done. You know, it's done in two layers. One's kind of a rough layer to get things leveled out, and then the second one is the final layer, the smooth layer, the one that is really completed to the edges, and the edges look good. I was very pleased with what I saw. I did see a few things that I wanted to have followed up on, and I brought those to the staff, and I know they're looking into that. But those were really overall very minor issues. And so, I just wanted to report back that I was very pleased with that. I still welcome any feedback that comes back from residents. But having walked the entire thing on both sides of the street, I think it was a good exercise to go through. Well, it was a good exercise, too. It was a good exercise to go through and really see how that was put together. So, I think it was a job well done. Thank you. There's still work, by the way, one other comment. They are still working. One of the things I saw was that the, I started walking it, and I saw, hey, you know, the road looks good, but the swells, this is not what we asked for it to be done, until I got about three-quarters of the way through my walk, and there they were digging up the swells. So, that's still a work in process. They're still working on the swells. They actually were working on it when I was walking out there. So, I'm withholding judgment on the swells until that piece is done, and we'll take a look at it again. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, I just want to say briefly, first thing I want to know, I guess most people know that I'm in what they call the cow-calf business, and we depend on grass. And I support all you horse people, but my horse is a golf cart because it don't eat that grass and pull it up. So, I know I've got a granddaughter that's coming up, and I think that's going to change when she gets a little bit bigger, and I may be into the horse business. But in the present time, I have sympathy for you people that have horses and try to keep a pasture, because it's very difficult with the horse to raise grass. But overall, I think we're very lucky that we have both here, the cows and the horses. I think it's all part of our, what we said we wanted when we made this town, that animals is one of the things we said, and it's still there, that if it's an animal that has something to do with the mess, that the, whatever noise they make is going to be allowed here. And we've lived up to that, and I think that we've been able to keep our word in making what people love. Some people love their horses. Some people love other things, but they have a right to have them. We've got to support them every way we can. Unfortunately, I have to depend on you people that have the horses when it comes to these things like the guard rails, that I personally overlooked it because I don't deal with it, but it's very important. I know in most cases, they always have that opening where the guard rail comes one way and the other way. They just show you got still the safety there, but there is, and if we overlooked that, by myself, I'll apologize because I didn't realize that was happening. And I'm glad you all brought to our attention. I'm sure that we'll make sure it don't happen again. Thank you.
Thank you, Kirby.
Yeah, I'll make it short and sweet. I think you clearly see that we understand the issue related to the guard rails out west. And I would tell you that the administration, I'm sure, will handle it, and if we need to put a little more pressure on it or something, we will get the problem fixed. So, thanks for bringing it to our attention. Sorry we overlooked it, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, everybody, for coming. I'll be brief. I just have a few comments. First off, I'd like to thank Juanita for her dedication and years of service to our town, both as a resident and as a town employee. I fondly recall when I took this office that I used to find little candy bars all the time, and she was the author behind that. So, I always knew when I got a memo from her. It was really nice, and I appreciated it very much, and her loyalty and dedication makes us what we are today. The other thing I'd like to talk about is, we've got some good news from the state of Florida. Andy and Keith will probably be commenting on that, and I don't want to take away their thunder, so I'll wait for that, wait for them on that. I, too, went down the western portion roads last week and drove them all, didn't walk them, drove them all, and the ones on 205 looked pretty good. There were some issues in the swale on 210 and 208, but overall, it was looking much better than what I would, what I had heard originally, and it may have been fixed because of the comments that were made. And, you know, it'll be somewhat of a work in progress, and we just need to be critical wherever we can and move forward with the Tisdor program. The other thing I want to address is the guard rails on Griffin for the equestrian community. Andy's going to be addressing that, and we take that very seriously. I want everybody to know that. And we're going to be lobbying and petitioning the county for more openings, and Andy will bring you more information on that. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thanks, Gary. Pretty much ditto. I think we're all on board. It's something that we overlooked. It wasn't intentional. I'm sorry people were appalled. We were very appreciative of the county. They came in and funded that project and agreed to do it, especially in light of those tragedies. We're not perfect. We do make mistakes, but the most important thing is where we go from here. And I know we're going to do the best we can to address it. And maybe in worst-case scenario, after it's installed, we can go back and do the alterations after the fact if they're not able to, you know, completely and a hundred percent satisfy, you know, the concerns of the riders out there to be accessing the trail. So, we'll get it fixed. I know Andy's going to talk about that. And again, Juanita, we love you. We're going to miss you, and wish you nothing but the very best during retirement. Aster had a great time at Chili Cook-Off, enjoyed it thoroughly. And congratulations to the winners and all the participants and all that were out there. I think we all had a great time and a lot of fun. That concludes my comments. That concludes item number seven. Item number eight, legal comments?
Sure, Mayor. I'll be brief. First, I'm a little under the weather tonight, so I apologize. I got out of the oral surgeon at 5:30 and came right here after being there for five hours. So, apologize if I fall asleep. In regards to things that happened since the last meeting, Gary alluded to it. The town of Southwest Ranches was one of the only cities in Tallahassee to get a straight-out appropriation from the governor, and the governor and the legislature agreed to pay the $300,000 to fund the remaining guard rails on Sterling Road so that we can finally complete that project. So, I'd like to thank the governor, the legislature, and our lobbyists for all their help on that. Last week, myself, the mayor, and Andy, and Councilmember Fissa Kelly went to the fourth DCA to watch the oral argument between CCA and Pembroke Pines. Quite frankly, it was a very good oral argument, but it's one of the ones that I have no idea the way the court is going to rule. But the decision on that case is whether or not Pines is required to provide water and sewer to that site, and whether or not they have decided to manifest the intent, is the word, to provide that site with water and sewer, so we'll continue monitoring it. That's it, Mayor.
Keith, I got to tell you, you look terrible. You know, I don't mean that derogatory, but I can tell you don't feel, I can tell you don't feel good. That's for sure.
But better than Melania, right?
That's true. All right, that concludes legal comments. Item number nine, administration comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I've got good news for you on several fronts, and certainly for the purpose of the audience, I will address the guard rails on Griffin Road, but I was going to conclude with that. I have a few other items I want to run through very quickly. Keith had mentioned the $300,000 that we got out of Tallahassee appropriations for guard rails. That's going to complete, fill every single hole that we have left from Appaloosa all the way out to Volunteer. So, we're very happy to have that, and it was certainly a very good year, $300,000 for us, you know, coming out of Tallahassee. So, we're pleased about that. While we're talking about state appropriations, I haven't had a chance to tell any of you this, this just in, but we were approved for our FERDA grant for $50,000 to put towards the ball fields over in the Country of States Park. So, I'm very, very pleased to share that with you. And I'll thank Emily for her hard work on that. So, got a new engineer coming on. We'll put him to work, and we'll go from there. Councilmember Bright Cruz had mentioned the CERT program and the Safe by Four program. It was all I could do to not interrupt you. Just, I wanted to share with you, Chief Downey is already booked, and we'll be doing that program at our next council meeting, first meeting in April. Bayla, I do want to thank you for being here tonight. I wasn't sure if you're still going to be here or not when we got to this point, but thank you. Just want to tell you that working with you and your staff, you're the utmost professionals. You are as unobtrusive to have in the office. Sometimes an audit can just kind of upset everything. There's just, you know, people aren't normally in the office. You guys are back there in the small conference room. You ask for information. You know, Marty or other staff members are able to get it for you, but it's, I don't want to say it's a pleasure to have an audit, but certainly, if that could be said, it would be about you and your team. So, I just want to thank you for that. And working, talking about the county and working with the county, before I get to the guard rails, one of the things that we've recently asked the county for, as you all know, is we wanted to have the traffic counts updated out on Griffin Road so that we know exactly what we've got now. We want a kind of a before-and-after of current traffic counts versus after the charter school opens in the fall. I'm pleased to let you know that the county has already concluded their traffic count data gathering. They're in the process of putting those reports together, so I look forward to sharing that information with you very soon. But they've already done their traffic counts and collected their raw data. So, I'm pleased on that. Okay. Last but not least, and certainly, certainly not least, and perhaps the most important, is the guard rail project out on Griffin Road as we're going for it. As the issues have been raised with this, we immediately got in touch with the county. I mean, we had shared with them, obviously going on the very beginning, that we needed access through the guard rail for our equestrian community, but also for service and maintenance issues. So, you know, that was communicated to them early on. At some point, that seems to have perhaps got lost in translation. We have been back in touch with them this week as this has become an issue as heated up. I'm very pleased to tell you that they are, they have been extremely receptive to our request for more openings, to the point where, as we're sitting here on Thursday, and this is, I mean, I spoke with Kathy on Monday, so this is, you know, developed last week and into this week, they have already made the request to the permitting agency, which is the South Florida Water Management District. So, the request has already gone from the county to the district. The district is requiring an updated survey. The survey has already been ordered. They expect, you know, that they should be able to add some openings in locations where the, I'll say logistics allow. They think the process is going to take about two to three weeks to resolve. But I do, I want to say again, they've been extremely receptive and have taken immediate action to help us. We had originally asked for two more openings. I've certainly heard the comments from the floor this evening. Council, you've heard it, and you've commented on it. We will be back in touch with the county requesting additional openings beyond that. So, we'll get what we can. I think we have a very, certainly a very good working relationship with them. We will continue that communication and try to just only increase those numbers to better serve our equestrian community. And that's all I have on that, Mayor, unless you have any questions for.
Thank you, Andy. Okay, that concludes item number nine, administration comments. Item number 10, resolution.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida approving a third modification to the agreement with Cleaning Systems, Inc. for Town Hall janitorial services, approving a month-to-month term, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to enter into the third modification to the agreement and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Andy?
Yes, Mayor. This is, we have a service, a professional service that the town contracts with for cleaning of Town Hall. They're in twice a week and, you know, provide all our cleaning services. They've done an outstanding job, but we've come to the end of that contract. We need to go back out to bid on that. We're going to do that. What we're asking you to approve tonight is a month-to-month that we expect will take sixty to ninety days, two to three months, and it's at the exact same price and contract terms we've been operating under. Thank you.
Thank you, Andy. Counsel?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion and second to approve. Any members of the public wish to comment on this item? See no public comment. Public comment is now closed. Again, motion and second, approve. Counsel, any additional questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, Russell, call a question, please.
Councilmember Jablonski?
Yes.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Bright Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor McKay?
Yes.
Mayor Nelson?
Yes. The next items are discussion items. First on the list, item number 11, public hearing purchase from Correction Corporations of America, the, obviously, our purchase of CCH property.
Mayor, counsel, although you've already voted to consummate the purchase, and it's going through its procedures from a legal standpoint, the Florida statutes gives the public several opportunities. We've had three already. This is the last opportunity to speak about the purchase of real property in a municipality. This satisfies the final requirement to give the public two minutes apiece to speak about the purchase. This is not an action item for the council.
Thank you, Keith. Okay, any members of the public here to comment on the purchase of this property?
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198 Terrace. You know, this is a huge investment for the town, and investments can go either way. I worry that we wait for the great deal, the deal, the super deal, the, you know, we're going to make the killing on the property. I would recommend that you guys set some goals, some criteria, so we don't sit on this for a long time. I mean, I think you ought to be motivated to get a tenant or get a buyer as quickly as possible to mitigate any possible risks to the town. I know Andy, excuse me, Marty arranged great financing, but things can change, and I'd really hate to see this become an albatross. So, the recommendation is, set some goals on timelines. I'm not saying dump the property if you get to two years and you haven't gotten the right bite on it, but don't let it languish. Create some criteria that you guys can live with, that you can put in front of the attorney and the town administrator for them to go to work on, because this can, all those people that were saying this is a bad idea, I'd hate to hear them saying, "I told you so," because we didn't act quickly. Thank you.
Jim Malaski, have you guys worked out different scenarios based on how much of that property is buildable, as it is as a whole piece, and if you broke it down into ten acres, fifteen acres, five acres? I believe you lose more and more property as you decrease the size of the buildable lots or tracks, however you're going to get rid of it. And I also think that the dynamics of distribution are changing so rapidly in the whole entire world that it might not be the same scenario you were talking about the other night with these fancy distribution warehouses. There's a ton of them around the United States, and the big guy, IDI Gazi, is having to get rid of a lot of properties now because his leverage ratio is so high. He's getting a lot of criticism by the investment community. It is a public company. So, there's a lot of property for sale. There's a lot of property for rent. There's a lot of property that's distressed. I'm not talking about hotels on Miami Beach. I'm talking about distribution all over the world. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, counsel, Andy, Keith, Russell, and Marty. Jill Aronofsky, 5781 Southwest 188th Avenue. I'll try to make this short and sweet. You're going to have a closing in a week or two on this property that we had this issue with CCA. The reason why I'm here is I want to request that you have in mind that it complements our rural style of living, and that would mean that there be no type of correction facility, penal facility, drug rehab, prison release rehab, psychological rehab. penal facility, drug rehab, prison release rehab, psychological rehab, and any other thing that would be hazardous to our community would be greatly appreciated since we had all these issues in the beginning. Like to bury the hatchet and go on from there with something that all the residents in Southwest Ranches can enjoy. It may be on the south side of the street of Sterling and closer to Pembroke Pines, but we still have our community that borders there and we need to keep our residents in mind as to what we can do to keep them happy also. The other thing is, is that we've been in a contract with CCA since 2005. Contracts calls for a 22-year contract. There's no date as to when it's going to be terminated or expire or anything, and that's very scary. All contracts need a termination point. Does it terminate when the land transfer is over and you have your closing and there's no further to do with CCA? Or are they going to be in the background because of this sewer and water issue? I'd like to see them gone and abolished. Thank you.
Thank you.
Neil Hollingsworth, 198th Avenue. One of the speakers stated about the, all of the warehouse areas that are being built and there's a surplus of them. Well, obviously, in this area, there is not a surplus of them because at the Conference of Plan meeting last week, we are reviewing for our commercial area on US 27 and Bergeron Park of Commerce land property manager was present and stated that to the area on Sterling Road east of the fire station, they're building 150,000 square foot transfer terminal and it will begin building next month. And they're building it on spec. Believe me, Bergeron Properties would not build anything on spec unless they already had something in the works. So, therefore, since there's going to be this 150,000 square foot transfer terminal running 24/7 on Sterling Road, and it is going to impact us, we need to find out, one, how much it's going to impact and if there's any mitigation that we can do, probably nothing, but since it is entirely within Pembroke Pines and it is their right on industrial property, and this is industrial that we have further south. Well, not yet, but we will shortly, within the next month. But I would like for us to take a look at our property and see what the best possible use of it would be since it is zoned industrial and what those uses should be within there and realign those to the best possible use for our town. And I hope that this council will think about it long and hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others wish to comment on this item? Any members of the public? Seeing none, public comment is now closed. Counsel, any additional thoughts moving forward? I think we've beat this horse to death. We know why we're here. We're now are in this position. This is M3, M4?
M4.
M4. There isn't anything of higher classification than that, so it is unique and unusual. It's not commonplace and as one of the speakers had said previously. The other thing that you have to remember too is that there's a planned 4,000-bed county facility, detention facility that is planned for out there and just to keep that in mind is, is well. And as you remember, you know, when you tried to get restriction timeframe-wise or commitment from the county, they told you no in an eight-to-one vote. So, there isn't anything that would preclude them tomorrow as of right to begin the construction of a 4,000-bed county detention facility. So, keep that in the back of your mind is, is well. We're evaluating all of our options and we do have some, some options and I look forward to consummating a potentially a relationship that bring to fruition something that's been planned by this town since our incorporation, but even prior to that, recognizing the Broward delegation, saying that we understand why this piece of importance, this property is important. You know, if there is incorporation process, which obviously we created the Town of Southwest Ranches and what this means to us from a long-term financial viability component. And in a million years, would I ever thought that we'd be in this position where we own this property? No, but Pines forced our hands and, and I quite frankly feel very confident that moving forward, that the Town of Southwest Ranches from a financial perspective will benefit significantly and bring to fruition what has been, you know, potentially planned from a financial perspective. Obviously, the acquisition of this property puts us in a position to, to do that, but a lot of things to be contemplated and decided and as we move forward with some of those options and some of the things that are being contemplated or considered out there, obviously we'll have a lot of discussion about that. So, with that being said, I know Steve, that you had a comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make a comment that I do very much hear what the residents out west have, have expressed over the years and are still expressing as far as any sort of a prison or detention center or any sort of that type of facility. I think there's a wide variety of, of uses that can be used out there that would be exceptional long-term uses for us and I don't think that there's any reason for us to maintain that one particular one as an option, to be honest with you. I think we've, we've gone down that road. We've, we've, we've heard the residents and there's, now that, you know, before it was different when there was the owner was, that was their job, that was their business was, you know, prisons and detention center and they owned the property. Now, now that's not going to be the case anymore. The, the options are wide open and I know that, you know, between yourself, Mayor, and Keith and Andy, I know you're looking at a lot of, lot of different things and I'm excited about hearing what the options are when they become a little bit more firm and move down there. So, that's exciting. But I did want to just get it on the record that I think with, with all the options, I think we can, we can safely eliminate that one. Thank you.
Any additional comments, Vice Mayor, Counsel? Seeing none, that discussion, discussion item number 11 is, is done. Item number 12, potential development of vacant properties. Doug, I know this was something that you wanted to add to the agenda. So, I'll turn the floor over to you.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor. Not only myself, but other residents, the towns had phone calls related to different parcels in town. One of them's been the town, the town parcel across from Tom Thumb on Griffin and Dykes Road that people have inquired about. A lot of them don't realize that it's not that entire parcel, that it's only five acres of that parcel and that the rest is a park. So, anyhow, I've met with some people. Andy's been with me. We've kind of explained that we didn't really have any idea what the town wanted to do with it, but in the past, it was originally going to be a Town Hall site and that it was going to be like laid out country style. So, each of you has this larger picture set up and this is just a reminder, if you look at the parcel site on the front, and this is just to show the audience because all of you don't have it, but that's the site at Dykes and Griffin, okay? And previously, years before, we had talked about and had laid out a thought or idea of some kind of commercial Town Hall stuff in a real open atmosphere with a lot of trees and whatnot. So, I just wanted to bring it up because we've had a lot of inquiries and like I said, not just myself, from other people, but from the people calling Town Hall, asking what you're doing with that site. We've had Rick Case call, wanted to park cars. We clearly said no. This is another shot of that similar look we were looking at, at building at that location. So, I just wanted to share that out there and let you all be part of a discussion to see what an if or an you might want to do with it or what we have an interest in, in doing with it. That's one of them. The other one is that I've heard that Masters Academy is going to sell off a parcel of, I don't know if it's 40 or 50 acres, next to them and I don't know if it's going to be the site where the pond is on the road. There's a section behind the pond. I don't know if it's going to be that section or if it's going to be the section on the other side of them to the east of where the school is now. I don't know if it's going to be this section, but that area right now is zoned residential with two and a half acre lots. The thought process for me, I would tell you that everything from Flamingo Road almost all the way to Volunteer is one to one and a quarter acres and that section is zoned, I believe, two or two and a half acres. So, I would tell you whoever's going to be buying it's probably going to come ask us for one acre home sites, which doesn't, not make sense because everything else is already one and one and a half acres, provided the access from Griffin Road. I wouldn't allow any internal access on that site, me personally, if it's going to be one acre sites, but it's just kind of a brainstorming, sharing an idea, suggestion, thought process in moving forward. If somebody wants to come in and develop and do some stuff, that we can kind of talk about it or air it out or get you guys' opinion or input. And then on another site that you all know about and a lot of you have heard about is the corner of Flamingo Road and Sheridan Street, which is this section, there's a couple of different parcels. It's 40, how many acres, Andy, do you recall? About 47 or 48 acres. And they had talked about parcel, partial commercial, partial residential. They talked about a, they went to all the HOAs, they did presentations. Frank Anzalone, I don't know if you all recall, came and met with all the HOAs, talked about different ideas, suggestions. Ultimately, I was expecting to come before us to give like a presentation. Somewhere along the way, it just died. So, the property owner had called and asked, "Is there any way, you know, we can talk about this?" I said, "Sure, I'll, I'll put it on a discussion. I'm going to bring up some other properties anyway. I'll, I'll add it to, to the list." So, one of the things that they had proposed that that particular location is internally from Sunshine Ranches, looking to these, they were going to build like a 30-foot canal and take all that fill and build a 12 or 15-foot berm so you wouldn't see into that section whatever they're going to do with it. So, I just, and it would be all the way along and a horse trail would be along next to it and whatnot. So, nobody ever saw or heard it and knew about it unless you actually went to the HOA meetings related to the presentations. And I think a lot of you did or heard it. So, I just wanted to share some of the discussion related to this with people inquiring and calling Town Hall or calling me or whatever and saying, "Look, what are you all going to do with this? What can we do? Is there a possibility of this? Is there a possibility of that?" Again, I've had people mention townhouses or condos. I said, "Not over my dead body." I said, "That, that would never happen." I said, "This council, we'd all be lynched." I said, "So, that's out of the question." I don't see anything ever going under one acre, ever, ever. So, that was one of, one of the discussions I had. Andy went to lunch with me on one occasion and he said, "What do you, tell us what you're looking for and what you want. We'll do it for you and we'll sell it back to you. Obviously, we'll make a profit, but you'll own it after the fact." So, do we have an interest or do we have an idea of what we may want to do? Do we want to do anything? So, that's why I'm bringing to you guys to kind of share discussion because as you guys know, we cannot talk about any town business, any town, anything unless it's right here in this forum on an open for the public discussion. So, that's why I brought this forward. I had people, not only Andy can confirm, he's had a lot of phone calls about people. I personally have had a lot of phone calls. I've talked to people. I said, "I have no idea what the council wants to do, but I need to bring it up and see, you know, share discussion, open forum and see what we can talk about." So, guys, I'm looking for your input and discussion.
Yeah, just a couple of comments. Doug, I appreciate you bringing it up. I think this is something that from a long-range standpoint and really trying to kind of shape how things will, will be 10, 20, 30 years from now, these are some important properties to, to talk about. I'll just give you my thoughts on each one. The one across from, the one at Dykes and Griffin, to me, I've always viewed that property as our, our front door, our gateway, our really kind of the main entrance to the town. I mean, you may be going either direction, east or west, but it's kind of the main, the main gateway there. So, when I've thought about that, I always felt like it needed to be something that was very open, that was not really built up in a, in a large way because I think that, that is who we are, is open space and I don't, I really don't, you know, personally, I don't really see it as a commercial-type entity or a corner because that's not who we are and I would hate for that to be people's first impression when they drive into town to see, you know, a big commercial, something this or that.
Well, that's why I brought those maps that, from previous to show you kind of what the layout we had looked at.
Yeah.
Thought about. So, I mean, as an open space, commercial strip mall, whatever, I 1,000% agree with you, but if it were something along those lines of those renderings, would you be open to that? I'm just sharing, brainstorming.
Just, just my opinion. I guess more as a resident than a council member because I wouldn't, I wouldn't put this out there as policy or anything like that, just being honest from my, my point of view of it. I like the look of what's there, but it concerns me from the standpoint of thinking, what would it look like 20 or 25 years from now with a town maintaining it? Most things that I've seen that a town maintains for kind of a commer, I don't want to say commercial retail, I mean, it's, those are kind of retail entities there, you know? I mean, they're rural retail entities, but things that would be maintained by the town and, and, you know, town is not in business to make money and so they don't maintain things. They don't maintain the looks and feel. I don't know. I'm, from a long-term standpoint, I'm not excited about it. I'll just say that. I like, I like the idea, but I don't know how it would work long-term. So, so from that standpoint, it's not something that really excites me, to be honest with you. From the, for the property on Flamingo and Sheridan, I think that's an ideal property. I know we had a couple of, a couple of entities that had some interest in that and kind of a, a, like a medical campus type of thing or something like that. I think that employment center sort of a thing is what makes the most sense there as long as we can protect those residential properties that are behind it. And I think-
That's a number one with that.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I mean, that's why I said the 30-foot canal and the fill from that would build the large berm. And the example for the large berm would be what's behind Archbishop McCarthy right now. So, it would be at least that size, if not larger, plus it would have to be landscaped somewhat.
Right.
So, the thought process and they, do you recall the presentation they did? Did you come to any of those meetings?
I think I did, yeah, yeah, yeah.
And that's been years ago.
Yeah.
But ultimately, through that process, I thought we'd see it and we never saw it and then I've talked to the owner of the, one of the owners of the properties and they're like, "What can we do?" And so, I said, "Well, let's talk about it."
Yeah.
So, anyhow.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think that's, I think that's the best use. I, I would have a hard time seeing residential homes right there on the corner of Sheridan and Flamingo Road. I'm sorry. I just don't, I don't, I don't have a hard time picturing that. So, I think that is a corner that, you know, if it was-
Proper lighting, like the town.
Right, right. And protected as Archbishop McCarthy has done. You know, that proves to me that it can be done. I would doubt that it could be done, except that it has been done and it's been done effectively. So, you know, that's what I see, I think makes the most sense for that corner. Would want the, obviously, as I'm sure all of us would, want the residents to be very involved, those residents that are right in there, I want them to be, you know, very comfortable with what we would be doing there as well.
Know what they want.
Yeah, yeah. As far as the last piece of property there, the New Testament, he's, I- As far as the last piece of property there, the New Testament, I have no thoughts on that. It didn't even occur to me that they were going to sell it until you just brought it up, so I, I, I won't venture an opinion on that one.
Okay.
And we are in active litigation on that site, so I would appreciate no comment on that one.
Yeah, there's another piece of property that's on the market right now, too, is a Cessna property. It's right close to that, it's going to be, it's going to be a big part of what's going to happen. I think that's 12 acres or more. I know it's on the market in that, in this space. So we got, like I say, we got a lot of pieces right in that area that's got to be tied together some way.
Right. What's, what's anybody else's thoughts here?
Yeah, if I could chime in. I'll just take them one at a time and give you my thoughts. The town, the Town Hall site, the five acres that the town owns over at Sanctuary, I don't know, I kind of like it right the way it is.
Yeah.
It's, it's empty, I think it looks fine, and we mow it. And, you know, we, we can always do something with it later. I, I'm not really too thrilled to develop it or to do anything with it. I, I, that's a top-of-the-line statement. You know, I might, I would, might, as a council member, consider something that had to coincide with the development of the park, because I think that would be a plus.
Positive.
Positive, but what that would be, I have no idea, and I couldn't phantom that, and we may be talking 10, 15 years down the road. The Masters Academy sites and all that, that's, to me, that's so far off on the horizon, and we don't actually own any of that, or, you know, it's, it's, it's not in, it's not in the, to me, it's not in the conversation at this point. The area on Sheridan and Flamingo, you know, I, it's, Sunshine Ranch is an equestrian community, it's, it's a residential community, you know, top-of-the-line statement, I'd, I'd like to see houses out there, if, if anything. I'm not really in for commercial development. That's top of the line. When we come down to the bottom, it might be another story. But, you know, the intrusion, the creep, you know, all of that of commercial property, you know, there's, there's water sewer issues, there's, there's, there's a lot going on that could be there that could be mitigated through residential property. So I'm kind of more leaning towards that. I'm just, just a discussion item at this point, we're not really doing anything, and nothing's on the table. But I'm just telling you where I'm going. You know, the, the bottom line may work out to be something different, but the top of the line, I'm for residential development as opposed to any, any type of commercial development. But, you know, if somebody needs to show me something more than a blank piece of paper, you know, that kind of thing.
I think the thought process, what I recall from them coming around and doing their presentation was to isolate that corner from the local residential part of Sunshine Ranches, which would be that 30-foot canal and a 12- or 15-foot berm landscape, because then you wouldn't even see into that corner of Flamingo and, and Sheridan Street.
I, I hear you. I just need, I would need to see something on paper before I would say, change it from residential. I would really need to see it all flexed out.
I, I, I don't think anybody would be in favor of changing it all to residential by any means, but I think they were thinking more of the out corner, as close as you can get to the corner intersection of Flamingo and Sheridan Street, and then surrounding the back of that and on to the north from that, doing residential homes. Just kind of what I recall seeing.
If I can just jump in the middle of that just for a second. I think, Gary, just kind of responding to your comment, you know, in my mind, the thing that, I do have a hard time seeing residential there, but to follow up on your point, if, if there was a plan to put residential there that, you know, everybody was comfortable with, that, you know, I would, I would take that over a, you know, a commercial use any day. You know, so I don't, I don't disagree with what you're saying at all. I think that's the preferred use. I just have a hard time picturing homes on that corner. But, but if it's, if it's possible, then I think that's a better use.
Yeah, I, I think it would all depend on what gets fleshed out. I mean, and it's too premature to, I, I don't want to lead anybody on, and, you know, suddenly discover we got 12 gas stations, you know, want to go in there.
Right.
And four banks right behind it, you know, or a distribution center, or Target, or, you know, or something to that effect, until, you know, I, I kind of like the idea of leaving it, it's zoned agriculture, I think, right now, and residential. And then you have the, the power line area, which can't be built at all underneath that on the, I think it's on the north side of the property, one of the parcels, you know? So there's a consideration for that area right there that may be feasible for, you know.
Well, let me ask you guys an additional question in, in this mix. If a, a property owner has a presentation they want to bring, what's the procedure? They shouldn't have to go through Michelle Melgram's office if they want to come. If there's no avenue and no idea to move forward, what's the avenue to get them here before us to discuss what they may or may not want to do, and whether we like the idea or don't like the idea?
I, I think I can comment on that.
Okay.
Because there has been, you know, other different scenarios where, you know, others had made proposals and threw things out to us for evaluation and contemplation. And I think that we do have a mechanism, when it comes before us, to have our conversations, you know, about getting feedback as to agree, disagree, I could go along with that, I couldn't go along with this. So there really is a communication mechanism. And, you know, from, from my perspective, I, I, I don't know, you know, I'm, I recognize what the philosophy is, is here, but with regards to Sheridan and Flamingo property, I think it's real important, there's no water and sewer out there. So ain't getting water, Pine's ain't giving us water and sewer. I mean, that's clear. So with regards to anything other than, you know, what can be, even can create it out there, construct it out there without water and sewer, I think that your options obviously are limited. And I think that right now, the only thing that can be done is probably residential. So obviously, that's an issue, and that is a significant issue. Talking about the, the Griffin and Dykes, that five-acre parcel, I'm inclined to, you know, go along with you all. I know that there was also some discussion at one time about a farmer's market, you know, that was some discussion. Obviously, some of the things were initially planned, wouldn't apply any, anymore, and you got a lot to do with that, Doug, because we have a Town Hall now, and a lot of it has to do, yeah, absolutely. A lot of it has to do, is, you know, part of what was planned previously was around Town Hall and administration building, and potentially a fire station, et cetera. New Testament, as Keith said, who knows what's going to happen with that? You know, we're in litigation currently. I know there's been some discussions about the Cessna property, what they can do, what they, what they can't do. I think, you know, all of us will entertain, you know, when I say entertain, you know, have a discussion with regards to thought processes of the people that, that would have the potential to develop that property. And I think it's clear, you know, with regards to our philosophy, what we would agree to entertain and accept and evaluate moving forward, and what we, what we wouldn't. You know, there has been, you know, on, on many occasions, things that have been thrown in, and one of the things, Rick Case, of course, you know, that, that took five seconds to say, no way, no how. But I know with regards to Cessna, that they were contemplating some things as, as well. And in the process of that contemplation, you know, had gotten some feedback of what would be, you know, potentially acceptable and, and not. So, you know, I kind of like things, too, the way that, the way that they are, but certainly, you know, if there's, you know, some contemplation of, you know, moving forward with regards to developing this property over and above residential, I mean, just take a look at the plan and what's being proposed, and see if it's something that is, is sellable to something that we would go along with. And we don't have any problems, because I know there's been many conversations that go to Andy and in our meetings, you know, obviously, we, we don't talk to each other, and you're absolutely right, Doug, this is a good idea to bring it forward and have this opportunity this evening. But there, I remember many conversations, I should say many conversations, but more than five, more than a handful, about what is being contemplated with regards to some of these pieces of property. And I think that the message was clear and emphatic with regards to what would be acceptable and what wouldn't be, and ideas and thoughts with regards to some of those, those proposals. So, you know, certainly, take a look at it, but with regards to Sheridan and Flamingo, you're limited anyway. You're not, I don't know how you're getting water and sewer, you know? Pine's ain't giving it to you.
Not our problem.
No, I hear you. No, I hear you. But they ain't giving it to you, you know? And right now, the only thing that's viable is residential development, because, you know, we know that onsite, you know, well, and, and obviously, no sewer. But you're limited with regards to your options, with your options currently. But certainly, you know, as we have in the past, and even sitting here talking to you today, Doug, listen, I'll sit there and, you know, and, and take a look at any-
I think part of what happens in this process, that, in people that I've spoken to that own the properties or are interested in properties, is how do we get to the Town Council and ask questions or whatever? And I know they talk to Andy, and Andy kind of vents through each one of us, kind of, you interested, you want to hear about it or not? But me personally, I think if, if a resident has a property in this town, that they have a right to come before us, to talk to us.
No, you're a problem.
To ask us.
Yeah.
So, you know, I, I guess that's the point where I'm kind of headed. I realize the Comp Plan Board does a lot of work, they have recommendations and stuff, but above and beyond that, I think property owners have rights to come talk to us, or ask us, or have an idea, or a thought, or a process to, to do something or not do something, you know?
Don't disagree with me.
So anyhow, I just wanted to get that aired out and get you guys' feel for it, because if I recall, most of us kind of liked that village look that the Town Hall site was going to be at one time. So that's why I brought it up, that's why I shared it with you, because I've had a lot of people that, whether they called and inquired, or called the town and inquired, what the thought was. And they, they said, what do you want there? And, and none of us kind of really have an idea or suggestion. Do we want to build any? I mean, we can't even use it the way it is now, because it's not level enough. So we got to demuck it a little and bring in some fill, even if we want to use a farmer's market there. So I guess the thought process for me is, you got people asking, they want to do something for us, what would we like to see there? What can we say? As Gary mentioned, maybe it's in conjunction with that, that park that we have to develop. I mean, if we've got somebody that will build something that we want, that opes us, and in turn, build out part of what we have obligated related to that park, that would be a win on both sides. Anyhow, just an idea and a thought process I just want to share with you all, because people are asking, want to know, what can we do? What do you want? We're willing to do whatever you want. So if we've got people asking us, we've got, if we have some ideas, share your ideas, and they can work with those ideas and come back to us and say, well, this is what we can do, or this is what we can't do. So to just sit here and say, no, we're not going to talk to you, won't see you, is a little crazy to me.
Right. I mean, I don't, I don't, I, I think that, you know, they, those, those individuals, whether they're residents of the town that own the property, or they're just maybe external people that live at someplace else but own property in town. It, it doesn't matter, yeah. Certainly, they are welcome, you know, I, my, my recommendation would be that they do go to the Comp Board first, and get a feel for what the, what the town as a whole will accept. But they don't, you know, they don't need to stop there, you know, they, they, but I, I would recommend that they have that conversation first, because I think they'll get educated through that conversation on, on to make a better presentation to the council. And I think it'll be more beneficial, and for everybody, for the council, for themselves, and for the residents that hear it. So I think that would be the process that I would recommend to them. I also wanted to just say a couple other things. Remember that we did look at this property, and the Comp Board looked at this property in detail for quite, I don't know how long it was, but many meetings, they looked at this property and came to us with recommendations about it, which I think was unanimous, in that we all said, no, we want to leave it the way it is. So, so, so also, you know, the Comp Board is well-educated in its property. They, they know, they've, they've done their, their homework on it. So I think they would be ready to have a good conversation with it. And then the last thing that I did want to mention was that, or a couple things, first, I, I do think that this may be a topic to have somewhere down the line for more resident input, so that, you know, residents can say, hey, this is what, especially those folks that live generally in those areas, to be able to say, hey, these are the kinds of things that we might like to see there. That's always good to, good to hear. And then the last thing that I did want to mention was that, on that property at Griffin and Dykes, there's five acres there, the whole thing, I, I am personally, and I've mentioned this before, pretty excited about potentially someday having a farmer's market there. But I see that not as a permanent kind of structure or anything like that. That's more of an event, you know, that can come and can go, not-
But would that be like a pole barn building, or what would you put there to do it?
Well, I-
Or would you put anything there?
Just level the ground. Yeah, frankly, frankly, I'm fine, I'm fine with, I mean, there's, there's a lot of challenges. I, you know, I, I brought it up, and, and staff gave me some feedback on it, and really kind of, not, not in a bad way, but kind of said, oh, okay, this isn't, this isn't, this is no easy slam dunk. This is, this, there's a lot involved in this. So it kind of made me step back from, from what I was initially pretty excited about. But, but I do think it's doable, but it's, I don't see, I don't see, I just level it out so the, so the trucks don't sink, you know? And, and, you know, have, have, maybe bring in a few porta-potties, you know, so that we can accommodate the residents. But basically, you know, after the weekend's over, it's cleared out, and it looks pretty much like it did before they started.
Listen, I also think that corner would make a nice, you know, car show event.
Yeah.
You know, if you leveled that out and use part of the park area for parking, we could set up the cars and whatever.
Yeah, unfortunately, it takes more than just leveling.
That could be a future use. But I think, you know, of all the properties that were listed here, the only one that we really have any control over, per se, is the town property on the five acres. As far as the other acreages concerned, I don't, I don't think we should be driving the conversation. I think the property owner should be driving it, though.
But here's the catch.
You know, that kind of thing.
Some of the property, I, I don't remember, but maybe you guys can tell me, did Frank Anzalone or that group ever come to the Comp Plan Board to do a presentation? Noel?
Yes.
They did?
George, hi.
Yes.
Early on? Okay. Anyway, I guess the, the phone calls I get are like, you know, how can we do this? Or how can we talk to you guys? Or whatever. I said, look, you can call each and every one of us, you just can't say who you spoke to, because as soon as you do that, you become a conduit, and you're going to get hung up on. I said, but they kind of want to come talk to us, and it's like, they don't, they're not in a process or ready to submit or pay money to do that, because they don't have any idea what we up here will accept or want to do. But yet, they want to come talk to us, and feel us out, and say, what are you looking for? What do you want? And everybody's kind of gun-shy of not being able to do that, or, not, not that you can't get by Andy, but it doesn't get put on an agenda item unless one of us has to do it ourselves and say, okay, a property owner called me, wants to come before us. Boom, okay, they're going to come do a presentation. You know, that's about the only way I know to, to make it happen right now.
Yeah, but there's some legal issues involved in that with, because right now-
Well, different properties there is.
Yeah, but it, but it's, it's zone residential. All these properties are zone residential, so they can start building houses on it tomorrow.
Right.
It's if they want to do anything different from that. Then we have an avenue to do that, and that's through the quasi-judicial process and, and stuff like that.
Well, the problem is that process is costly and a very sticky-wicked to get there.
Yeah, I understand.
And if you don't have an idea of what this council's going to accept or do, why are you going to go spend money that you know, you don't have an idea that you can do it or not? I'm not going to go spend money on a hope, wish, and a dream that I can come before you guys and say, hey, you know, we want to do this, and we went and spent $100,000 on these plans and these drawings, and this and that, and this is what we'd like to do. And we say, well, you should have come talk to us first, we wouldn't have had you spend all that money.
Well, there, there is a process that's in place for that, and I think just going around that is-
I think it's not clear. So I guess I'll get with Keith.
No, I mean, the law is very clear that it's a quasi-judicial process. So they can make an application with Michelle Melgram, come to the town and do a presentation. Now, I'm not saying that they have to formally submit-
What does that cost to do, Keith?
I have no idea.
Okay.
But that's what the law requires. And also, as it relates to that one property specifically, the corner of Sheridan and Flamingo, I wouldn't listen to anything until they provide you with approval for water and sewer, because if not, they're wasting everyone's time even speaking about it.
Well, on the flip side of that, if they don't see, I'll give you the other side of that argument is, is there's not something we can do that's going to work for everybody. We're not even getting intent to go get water and sewer. So I mean, that, who came first? The chicken or the egg?
No, there's, the water and sewer can come from three sources. That's it, okay? Cooper City, they're maxed out, so they can't provide anyone.
They already said no.
Pine said, no way in this lifetime.
And Sunrise, $3 million.
Probably almost close to $4 million for that site to bring water and sewer.
That's right.
So as a result of that, that particular site is residential.
Well, unless you took an acre and put in your own.
Put in what?
Your own water system and stuff.
Water and sewer?
Yeah.
The town of Southwest Ranch is going to start a utility?
I'm just saying, in different locations, you can take property, you can build your own internal system.
It really wouldn't be permissible by the county. CCA tried that, and, you know, there are many, many issues there, and drain fields, and outdoor septic systems, and tanks above ground. It's really not feasible.
Yeah.
Yeah, of course.
Okay. And I hear what you're saying. There, listen, I appreciate it, Doug. We need to have this conversation. You're absolutely right.
Listen, this is the only time we can have it.
Absolutely right. I agree with you. I agree with you. And I like the mechanism that you had suggested, Steve, you know, go to the comp board. And when they're going to make the presentation, anything precluding us from going there and listening is, as well. So I don't have a thought, you know, quite frankly. But I certainly listen to thoughts, you know? And with regards to those thoughts and listen to the thoughts, I might have some ideas. And, you know, can you come up with a consensus eventually with this council, philosophically moving forward with, you know, developing that property? Maybe? You know, maybe? I mean, there's the possibility, maybe. So I don't know if that helped. I think it helped a little bit. At least you have a mechanism, and there is an opportunity for those who want to develop the property to communicate. And I understand it. Nobody's saying invest anything. But if there's any questions, or if they're contemplating, you know, moving forward, you know, go to the comp board. There's nothing precluding us from going there, listen to what they have to say, and what's being contemplated. I can assure you that they get a lot of constructive feedback from those, from those board members, that's for sure. So if there isn't anything else, I'd like to move on to item number 13, which is the Broward League of Cities Board of Director Appointments. Russell?
Mayor, as in the past, we have received a letter from the Broward League of Cities asking for the town to consider making an appointment for a director position on the Broward League of Cities. They're also seeking to have a alternate and a second alternate, as we have had in the past. And basically, the responsibility would be for the person to attend meetings of the Broward League of Cities and, you know, voice the town's position on certain issues that would affect the town. So they're asking for your consideration tonight to appoint a director, an alternate, and a second alternate.
What's existing, Russell?
It's all over your face, Steve.
I'm hiding behind, I'm hiding behind.
We're all here, so.
Doug's our man. Doug's our man.
I was getting ready to get your arrow, like-
I haven't been able to make it for a while, so.
Yeah, thanks. What?
I'm not a better slot to make it.
No, I hear you.
Russell, who's, what's your current position?
I believe the current director is Council Vice Mayor McKay, and Council Member Fissa Kelly was appointed as an alternate.
Excellent. And they've done, and they've done an exceptional job.
That's great, except I can't make it.
They've done an exceptional job.
No, I haven't been in a long time.
Don't say that.
That's the truth. I apologize, but I haven't.
What would you guys like to do?
Ask Freddie if he wants to be the primary.
What do you think, Doug? I know you're busy, too, you know? And then, listen, it's important. This is-
It is important.
League of Cities, very important.
Listen, you know, if I could make it all the time, I'd love to go, and I'd step up to the plate. But unfortunately, things have changed, and I can't make it all the time.
So maybe you and Council Member Fissa Kelly want to just swap position?
How do you feel about that, Freddie, between the MPO and being a representative on the-
The League of Cities.
League of Cities. How do you feel about that?
I don't have any problem with it.
Okay. And then you'll be first alternate?
I guess I'll be the first alternate.
You need a second alternate.
I'm happy.
I saw Steve on with it. I lost him real quick.
I ducked. Steve's doing cartwheels. I'm happy.
I think he had to be second alternate. Steve had to be second alternate.
You know, it'll never get to you, Steve.
Yeah.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, second. There you go. You got it. Freddie, first alternate, Doug, and Steve, second alt. Thank you for stepping forward. That's very important.
I just didn't step fast, step back as fast as the rest of you guys.
It was all over you. That was fantastic. That was priceless, quite frankly, Steve. That was priceless.
I can't wait to go back and see that on TV.
Yeah, it was good. Okay. All right, that concludes. Thank you all for stepping up to the plate to do that for the, for the town. All right, item number 14, approval of minutes?
There's no, there's no minutes tonight.
All right, there's no minutes. So scratch item number 14.
Motion to adjourn?
I got a motion to adjourn, and I'm sure it's unanimous. Great job. Always a pleasure, Vice Mayor and council members. Have yourself a good evening. Thank you very much. This meeting is hereby adjourned.
Ditto.